Good evening, welcome to the August 2nd, 2017, meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. First up is the approval of our minutes from July 19th, 2017. Matt, you and I were out, right? So we still have three that can vote on that. So it's our motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes from the Wednesday, July 19th, 2017 Planning Commission meeting.
It's moved in second.
It's moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and we have two extensions, so that's 302. We would have had next, record plans and consent items, but there are none scheduled for this evening, so that takes us to sign. I'll get over it, I know. That takes us to sign permits, and first up, Caroline Sidon, presenting from staff, is sign-14547-2017 and 14548-2017. Good evening, Caroline.
Good evening. These are two signs for Chiswell Automotive that were submitted for a commercial service building at 86 Bureau Drive. The building is right here, facing the railroad tracks and 270 just beyond, and is part of the entire Chiswell Automotive group. On July 1st, 2015, the auto dealership received an amendment to final plan for a building addition to this building and a facade renovation, and at the time, there was a condition that they come back with a sign package. They had decided at the time not to put signage on the building, so that condition was never met, and they have now decided to put signage on, so we are coming back with the signage. It's also required in accordance with Section 24-212b4, which requires that all automobile signs be approved by the Planning Commission. And additionally, one of the signs is over 100 square feet, and that requires Planning Commission approval as well. There are two signs, one on the front of the building, says Chiswell Commercial Service, and just on the entrance to the building, and then the larger sign, 196 square foot sign, is on the rear of the building, facing the railroad tracks and 270 beyond.
So you consider the front of the building? It's not Bureau Drive really, it's the long side facing back toward the parking lots, I guess. Or do you consider...
This is considered the front of the building, just because that's the entrance to the building here.
Yeah.
So that's First Field, right?
No, it's...
Well, it's addressed off of Bureau Drive. Bureau Drive is here.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So these buildings, this one and this one, are both addressed off of Bureau Drive. Some of the buildings are addressed off of Quins Orchard Road, I believe, even though the entrance to the actual facility is at First Field.
Okay. So the one that's greater than 100,000, or hundreds of square feet, is facing back toward the tracks, right?
Right. It's on this side, on the rear of the building.
Yeah. And we've seen on the past, there's always, the visibility is kind of strange, though, you get little glimpses of it from...
It's not terribly visible.
Yeah. Just those two, right? Any questions?
No questions.
Is anyone here in the audience here to speak on this app? What's the recommendation?
Staff recommends that the Planning Commission, based on the exhibits submitted and the staff report, findings and recommendation, grant sign-14547-2017 and 14548-2017, Chiswell Automotive, finding them in conformance with Sections 24-212 and 24-213af of the city code, with no conditions.
Okay, great. I think since we're going to crack the limit, and that's one of the reasons for the approval, let's just get a little discussion around that and make sure we've justified.
Yeah, I think, go ahead. Just, obviously, the sight line's all the way out to the highway, and then to the parking lot behind us. I'm not too worried about train views, but trying to get a view from the highway in order to do a little bit of wayfinding to get folks at least some idea of where the commercial center is, so that, you know, it's a very difficult site to begin with, it's an isolated property to begin with, so there's a lot of sort of burdens on this particular property that don't happen a great deal in the city. So I'd really like folks to try and find this commercial center as quickly and as simply as possible, although I'm not sure how possible that is, but, so I think the larger sign is certainly justified as a unique variance to this particular property.
Yeah, I think it'll still be harmonious, you know, and it won't be offensive or intrusive to, you know, the residential community or anything like that. I don't think it's going to be, you know, offensive or big, you know? So I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, very good. Any other comments, questions, concerns? All right, I think we're ready for motion, then, please.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move that, based on the exhibits submitted and the staff report, findings and recommendation, that we grant sign-14547-2017 and sign-14548-217, approval, finding them in conformance with Sections 24-212 and 24-213af of the city code, with zero conditions.
Second. It's moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes unanimously. Thanks. That was easy.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that back. Next up is sign-14452-2017 and sign-14453-2017, Stonehouse Pasta, and presenting from staff is Ray Roaks. Good evening, Ray.
Good evening. Just one moment. All right. This application is for sign-14452 and sign-14453, 2017, located at 18701 North Frederick Avenue. This property is owned C2 General Commercial. This application comes before the Planning Commission because the proposed sign contains an icon in the shape of a chef holding a pizza pursuant to Section 24-212J of the city sign ordinance. Any sign containing an icon requires Planning Commission approval. The proposed signs are identical to each other and face North Frederick Avenue on the southeast and corner of the building, which are here. The signs are 24 square feet in area and not illuminated. There is not a sign package for this property, and staff finds that the proposed signs are in conformance with the city sign ordinance, and that the proposed signs are consistent with other signage in the area. Staff is available to answer any questions that you may have.
Is that one of your new cursors that just popped up?
Yeah. Slightly different than my computer, so it didn't quite work out the way I planned.
All right, well, maybe it is. But they still look kind of cool.
I thought it looked cool, too. Thank you.
All right, any questions about the proposal?
No questions.
Okay. Is anyone here in the audience speaking on this application? Anybody has an opinion about the little guy with the pizza? All right. And we're only considering, I guess we're only considering the icon tonight, so...
Yes, sir.
No questions? Go ahead.
I'd just add to the wayfinding argument, to just, if we can get people here quickly as possible, I think this particular logo obviously helps a great deal to let folks know what's going on in this building.
In both directions of, you know, Frederick Avenue, I agree with that. I agree.
So I agree.
Oh, I passed it. Where was it? You know?
Yeah. Like, it's the logos in keeping with our wayfinding standards, so...
Ray, what's the recommendation, please?
Staff recommends that the Planning Commission, based on the exhibits included in the staff report, findings and recommendation, grant sign-14482 and sign-1453, excuse me, 14452 and 14453, 2017, Stonehouse Grill, finding it in compliance with Section 24-212 of the city sign ordinance.
Very good. Any concerns for the discussion?
No.
No? All right, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the Planning Commission, based on the exhibits submitted and the staff report, findings and recommendations, grant sign-14452 and 14453-2017, the Stonehouse Grill, finding it in conformance with Section 24-212 of the city code, with zero conditions.
Second.
It's moved in the second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
I will mention for the record that alternate Commissioner Phil Westle is joining us on the day, and participating this evening, as not all commissioners are present. So for the record, when you hear his voice on the tape, he's legit.
And Ray, I'm really digging that whole barbershop quartet up there.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to our site plan agenda tonight. There are two. The first one is SP-7628-2017, 200 Skidmore Boulevard, the CD Quarter Development Zone, and presenting from staff tonight is Jasmine Forbes. Good evening.
Good evening. Staff is before you this evening to present a final site plan application, SP-7628-2017. The subject property is located at 200 Skidmore Boulevard in its own CD Quarter Development. You can see down the aerial that the site's currently an extended stay hotel and access to the sites from an entrance on Skidmore Boulevard. The applicant's requesting approval to convert an existing extended stay hotel to senior rental apartments. This application is based upon concept site plan SP-7495-2017 and zoning map amendment, Z-7496-2017, which was approved on May 1st, 2017. The application that's being presented tonight is the final engineering architectural drawings for this project. The application comes before the Planning Commission in accordance with Section 24-168, which requires the Planning Commission to grant final site plan approval, and also as part of this application, the applicant's requesting a waiver to not provide motorcycle spaces, that's required in Section 24-219b of the city code. The Planning Commission has the authority to grant parking waivers pursuant to Section 24-222a, and I have Stacy Silver from Lurch Early and Brewer, who's going to introduce the project team.
Great. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Stacy Silver with the law firm of Lurch Early and Brewer, and I'm here tonight on behalf of MRK. With me here tonight is, I have Brian Russell with MRK, I have Dan Pino from Soltez, and we have Jim Moy, who's with Blumenthal's Architects. We appreciate staff's professionalism and attention to detail on this project, and we agree with their recommendations. We've also been working with our neighbor, Gateway Commons, and what you're seeing tonight in terms of the site plan incorporates many of the comments that we heard, and I understand Dave Cook is here tonight as well, who's the president, who has really been the lead throughout this process for his community. The property consists of 5.4 acres. It's located on Skidmore Boulevard. It's adjacent to South Frederick Avenue, but it only has access from a two-lane residential street of Skidmore. The Skidmore Boulevard serves the Gateway Commons community, as well as the current Hyatt House Hotel property. MRK has been working on this project, has been studying in terms of the market, and we'll talk a little bit about the senior housing that the council and you all recommended through the rezoning and the concept plan approval, but the Hyatt Houses, you see to on the left-hand side in the existing, it's a underperforming asset. It's had vacancies, which is why MRK has been involved in the project and is looking to convert the Hyatt House to an independent senior community with individuals 62 and above. The project is subject to an annexation agreement that was approved by the council and has now since been signed and recorded, signed by both the city and the applicant, and in effect, the annexation agreement limits individuals who live in this project to 62 years and above. MRK actually has an additional requirement, at least, that restricts individuals living in the community to be 45 years or older as well. In terms of senior housing, we talked a little bit about this through the rezoning and the concept plan, but I thought I'd just give you a little bit more background, so you have it as well. The city of Gaithersburg and Montgomery County have experienced an overall population growth over the last six years, with the most significant increase occurring between 65 and 74 ages, and between 2010 and 2016, the segment of the population grew by 39%. Also noteworthy is that the 55 to 64-year-old segment grew by 19%, which signals that the senior population is not only growing today, but will continue to grow in coming years. In terms of some of the surrounding land uses, this property is blessed with proximity, and it's basically across the street from the Casey Community Center, there's a Montgomery Medical Clinic that's nearby, and then we have the Walnut Shopping Center, Walnut Hill Shopping Center as well. The, as I mentioned, the existing hotel has experienced vacancies, and there's 140 units. The building was constructed in 1998. It was updated in 2013, and again, despite the reinvestment, the hotel still has not been thriving and has suffered. This is a rendered plan that shows the layout, the buildings from the Hyatt House will remain in the existing configuration, and what MRK has been working on with their consultants is, in effect, transitioning the hotel-type use to a residential character, and their focus has been on amenities, architecture, and then also through elevator access, and we'll talk a little bit about that. So currently, the Hyatt House has no elevator access. The community consists of three-story and two-story buildings. During the concept plan stage, MRK had proposed the addition of two elevators that resulted in 120 of the 140 dwelling units having either ground floor or elevator accessibility. During the concept plan stage, we had heard some comments of a desire to see whether MRK could achieve greater accessibility of the elevator, and so they went back and studied and had their consultants study, and as a result of the studies, they were able to add additional accessibility to it, but eight of the units, or 132 of the 140 units, now have either ground floor or elevator access. So this is a great deal of an expense for MRK, but we're pleased that we were able to accomplish this addition. In terms of trips, the, again, this is something that was reviewed in the concept plan, but just to go through it one more time, Wells and Associates, a traffic engineering firm, had looked at traffic in terms of adequate public facilities, and as you can see, the senior community actually generates 19 less trips than what is currently generated from the hotel-type use. From a parking perspective, the project will provide 143 parking spaces. 70 spaces are required by code for residents, leaving 73 surplus spaces for visitors and employees. As noted by Jasmine, MRK is requesting a waiver from the requirements of motorcycle parking. MRK doesn't believe such spaces are necessary in the senior community, but if there ends up being very cool seniors who do have motorcycles, there's adequate access spaces to accommodate those motorcycles as well. In terms of architectural enhancements, again, this just shows the before and the after of the architecture, and I'm going to actually have Jim Moy come up on, Jim is, again, the architect who's working on the project, and he's just going to describe a little bit further in terms of some of the details.
The top image is Building A, which is the main community center as you enter the building, the site. So existing conditions are siding all the way down, and the teal-green color is part of the corporate branding of the Hyatt House. So we're proposing to put the brick around the base of the building to tie it in more residential feel and tie it into the existing residential neighborhood, and then we're changing up the color scheme to, you know, removing the teal, which is fairly bright, to something that's more residential and, you know, once again, blending into the community. The lower image shows the typical elevation of the residential units. The, once again, you know, changing up the colors, and if you go back one slide, there's all of the teal pickets of the rails that really pop out. The new rails, we'll be replacing those wood pickets with a metal open mesh rail system, and, you know, the color would be more of a neutral color that, so they don't stand out and it blends into the rest of the building more. Advance one slide. The, in the center of this slide, shows the new elevator tower. The, there's two buildings shown in this image with the new elevator tower in the center of them, with the lobby for the elevator, and with bridges connecting the different buildings together. So by adding the two elevators, we're able to connect all the buildings except for the Building A. So all the three-story buildings are connected and accessible either by grade or elevator to the upper levels.
The next one? Pink. So the next slide that we're showing just provides another view of the buildings. Again, it talks a little bit about the materials that are there, but it just shows how the bridges are connecting the buildings.
Yeah, in the center there, between the buildings, you can see the image of the bridges between, connecting the walkways at the upper levels, and then the palette of colors and materials in the lower right.
In terms of community amenities, the property has a swimming pool and sun deck, they have a spa, there's a large courtyard, which is actually a unique and great feature for the senior community that actually already exists. There's a fitness center, and there's actually a sport court that will be determined exactly what the use will be when residents move in in terms of what they're looking for, but shuffleboard or other more passive type of activity. In terms of the entry building, the entry building is going to be converted from the hotel lobby, and again, lots of opportunities with the existing structure. There's going to be a rental leasing office in the building, a community kitchen. As you can see, there's a lot of light that comes in, it's enhanced laundry facility, computer business center, exercise room, mailboxes, there's going to be additional storage units that are going to be added that are not there currently, and then because of the area, they're actually able to provide five community rooms that can be programmed based upon the desires of the residents. So just in conclusion, we ask that you support staff's recommendation, and MRK looking forward to being part of the community.
Great, thank you. Let me ask you a quick questions. When you were talking about the trip generation, that's assuming full occupancy in the hotel, or is it existing occupancy right now?
It's actually, it's based upon IT, so it's actually based, which is the traffic study that, you know, nationwide, and looks specifically at senior housing. Actually, the senior housing that they were looking at is actually younger than what we're proposing here. It's, IT has 55 and above.
Okay, so you used a norm or a standard for the proposed new use, but then what was the benchmark for the hotel? The same thing?
Yes.
But in their category, that category, but it was an actual takeoff, and what's going on there now, is just based on...
It's based upon what a hotel generates.
The bridges that you're building to connect the new elevator towers, are they covered?
No, they are not.
Why not?
The complexity of the roof, existing roof lines, it doesn't, to maintain the appearance of the building, you know, it would be harder to connect the, extend the roof over it, and plus, adding a roof structure to it adds more weight structurally, and it doesn't really protect a whole lot from the weather, because rain doesn't fall straight down, snow blows. Adding the roof doesn't really add that much protection when it's open on both sides. The current walkways are protected on one side from the building itself and open to the other side, so it provides more protection to the elements than a double-sided open situation.
Can I ask a follow-up? Because that was a question I was going to ask, but had there been consideration of a canopy? I mean, I understand, like, when you have, you know, an umbrella, you're not, you know, your feet are going to get wet, but most people, you know, don't want to be like a wet hand, mad, because they're wet. So, I mean, is there some coverage of the head, maybe, or consideration of a canopy? Because that's not as heavy as a roof structure, a metal roof structure, or anything like that.
Yeah, it's, the way I was talking about is more from snow loads and things like that, depending on the configuration, if it's sloped or flat, or things like that.
I'm not an architect, but, I mean, if you, you know, kind of have it, you know, have it so that the snow or whatever would slide off, may that be consideration, been given to that.
How wide, how wide are the bridges?
I believe they're eight feet wide. I'd have to double check, but...
I was going to say, we had actually looked at that as well. MRK had looked at that with their consultants, and as mentioned by Jim, there are challenges with it. I mean, in terms of enclosure, you then have to sprinkler and there are other requirements from a building code perspective, but in terms of basically kind of addressing the issue of the area in which people are walking, we also were looking at it from a perspective of folks that are walking on the ground floor level as well, obviously similarly on the sidewalk side is an exposed area, but from a building perspective, when we were looking at coverage, there just were challenges with having it covered, and it impacted also the architectural look of the building when you were covering the bridges.
I think this is a practical matter, the first floor is covered by the second-floor bridge, the second floor is covered by the third-floor bridge, that really, the question is why not cover the third-floor bridge?
I guess my one concern is the rain issue is more of a comfort issue. My main concern with it is ice and snow in the wintertime.
Yeah.
When I first moved to the area, I lived in an adjacent apartment building not too far from here that had open stairwells, and management was fabulous at icing the sidewalk, but nobody salted the stairwells, so that's sort of a concern from a management perspective.
From a, in terms of materials, that is actually something that MRK and architects have done that as well.
It's good, the construction of the walkways, the existing surfaces are concrete, it's a wood structure with concrete topping, and which, all the new materials will be similar to that, and then we're looking at different top coatings to make it slip resistant, and then as far as snow goes, you know, that's definitely a management issue that they're aware of and are, will be addressing, especially for this population.
Yeah.
It's a concern that no matter, you know, if those bridges were there or not, sidewalk stairs, the open balconies, those all have to be addressed already.
What is the, your lease agreement or practice for cars, for residents of cars? Do they get one? Do they, what is the, by rider, what are they allowed to do?
So, and Brian can talk a little bit more about it, but I can start the conversation. So in effect, to have, when you have a car, you need to register your car when you, as part of your lease. I don't think there's a specific amount. Brian, why don't you talk a little bit about it?
No, so when you register with the lease, you'll get a parking pass, and then it'll just be monitored as that. There's plenty of space for everyone.
So in other words, there's not an explicit amount of spaces that are allocated per unit, it's a matter of the number of residents that are there, but you do need to get a parking pass to be able to park in the lot. If you have a guest, the guest actually similarly needs to get a pass to be able to park overnight in the lot, and then it's regulated through management.
Okay, so, actually, I should note this in front of you, how many parking spaces are on site now?
There's, today, there's 150 spaces today, and there'll be 143 spaces with the development.
So 143 spaces, how many units?
There are 140 units.
140.
And the code requires for 62 and above, 70 spaces.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question about the, can we go back to Exhibit 6? I believe that's the overhead view of the entire site. Can we talk a little bit about the elevators and show those units that won't have elevator access?
Sure. So the only building that does not have elevator access is Building A, which, can you see my, the hand?
Yeah, yeah, I can see it.
Okay. Is Building A?
Okay.
And this is the building that is the, where the community space will be. This is the community room, the entry building where the sign, I can show you. So this is Building A here, and actually, the units that are in this building, so there are eight units that are on the second floor, interestingly, this is the one building where there actually is interior access to the units on the second floor, so actually the stairway inside serves the upper eight units. There are four units on the corners that you actually, there is exterior access as well, but this is, Building A is the only building that does not have the elevator access.
So, you know, between, I'm not sure what building it is, what number it is, but the, yeah, I know that one, but I'm talking about the one next to it.
I believe it's B to the right.
The long, the longer one, yeah.
Yes.
So I can see, I guess there's a long bridge that connects it, connects F to the, so I guess it's cost prohibitive to put an elevator between A and F?
Yeah.
That was the issue?
Yes, so it's cost prohibitive, but then the other issue is because of how the units are accessed interior to the building, the issue was where would the elevator be placed? And the discussion had been is it would need to be within the interior courtyard, which would be taking away from some of the interior community space, and the other issue is that it's actually over a million dollars to add in the elevator for the Building A, from which they were studying. And the other issue is that it's, it's actually over a million dollars to add in the elevator for the, for the building A from which they were studying.
I mean, there's no other kind of, I mean, like chair lift or something, I mean, there's nothing.
Well, that's with the, only the eight units. No, just because you're senior doesn't, you're not, no, unable to walk stairs. So those eight units would be, you know, leasing and things like that would, you know, take that into consideration. Obviously someone that needs more accessibility.
Could choose to be in one of the other buildings, so it's.
Yeah, but, but if they have visitors or guests who needed access and had, had stair issues, I guess.
Things change over time too, when people live there, they, they have medical issues, everything's happened. Is there any public space on the second floor or, or community space?
I think that there is.
There's a.
Small conference room.
Yeah, there's a conference room, um, community room right in the center of it. Adjacent to the two-story space.
Most of the community space is on the first floor.
So, so, so we've tried every option to, to have some sort, I, I'm just concerned about the fact that there's no, I mean, it's a senior spa. This whole thing is senior and, and I'm just concerned about accessibility in that building.
We, we did study, no, I, I understand. We, we studied it kind of all different ways to see what could be done. MRK's actually initial, general experience in doing senior housing is that there actually are many of their projects don't have any elevators at all. They're, because it's an independent.
I just have to see your lips.
Thank you. Basically, as an independent living community, most of the people, it's an active adult community. So most people who are choosing to live here are more active adults. But because that a hundred and thirty-two of the hundred and forty units, do you have that ability to have accessibility from an elevator? It gives lots of opportunities and options for those that are coming in to lease, so.
And the reason, the reason, I, I mean, I know some places, I mean, I know elevators are very expensive to, 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 to install and operating, maintain. But I mean, was there any sort of kind of lift or something that had, had been considered? I guess you did, I mean, but I just wanted to know.
And I, I, I cannot, I don't know if, I mean, faith answer, if I looked into anything further.
Lifts are typically not a replacement of a elevator. They're in quite, quite few, I'm not sure this, I didn't look at it in this area. But typically the wheelchair lifts that you see aren't a replacement of a elevator itself. They're for unique situations to get up to a, like, to get up to your level of the step up here or a four foot rise or things like that. Typically, they're not allowed to go a full story in most situations.
I guess my, I'm, I'm looking at the plans for the, the first and second floor. And just to my eyes, it looks like there is some space in the front office closet that stacks floor to floor with the closet above where you could put something. I guess my, I, I go sort of back and forth on whether it would really be worth it. Because in, in my eyes, especially for this unit, one of the big advantages to an elevator is move in and move out. Whereas your other units, you've got an exterior stair, open stair, you know, getting a couch around the stair, you get a couple guys lifting over the handle and no problem. Here, your stair is an interior stair, open to public space. It's not, you know, it's going to get beat up.
There are stairs on the exterior on both ends.
You can see my, where my cursor is. This building is kind of blessed with both interior and exterior staircases, so that actually does address.
That the interior ones are connected by the hallway.
And so I, I guess where I was going is the, the couple locations, just an eyeball in this, that I could see you could fit possibly some elevator in there. It would never be nearly big enough to be used for move in, move out, it'd be a wheelchair only. So that sort of decreases the, the value, the cost benefit of it.
And elevators have to be, you know, at least one in a building has to be big enough for a hospital or a gurney from an ambulance. And so they're a fairly large size, the first one has to be a large size. Typically you can go to a smaller one if you have two side by side type of thing. And so that's where the cost comes in because you have to put the deluxe model in first and then go from there.
I was just gonna say, I, I don't share the concerns about shed roofing, the, the non egress path, you know, elevator bridges. I, I don't share the concern about putting a, an elevator in these last eight units. You know, I, if I, if it wasn't within my purview, I would have more concern about how accessible are the units or you're actually retrofitting the units, which maybe you guys can talk a little bit about. But it's not in my purview. But my only sort of concern was with John's comment was that you actually have public use on the second floor. Now, I assume that conference room actually is redundant use and that you have something on the first floor that can be used for that.
There's four, there's four common areas on the. So over on the left there, there's the, um, community rooms that would be.
It's community room one and two.
Programmed.
So those facilities are equivalent or better and will be first priority, obviously, for anybody who requires access. Any other questions? I wanted to just step back real quick and, and I may have missed you saying something specific about this, but generally speaking, what are the site improvements that are coming along with this, this conversion?
In terms of amenities or in terms of?
Well, just condition of the site, whether it's the, the existing paved areas, landscaping, outbuildings, things like that.
The, the one benefit of this community is that there's actually, there, there's a tremendous amount of amenities that are actually currently on site. And because of the work that was done in two thousand thirteen, again, this property has a lot of benefits to the fact that there's not much that has to be done. There's mature trees that are already on the property, the pavement is in pretty good shape. The one aspect that actually has deteriorated is actually the blue siding that's on the existing hotel structure. So that's, the facade is actually where there needs to be the most work.
Yeah, I think, I've been on the site a couple of times and, and, and this is totally anecdotal, I don't have pictures or a specific inventory. But I think there were a couple of accessory shed structures that looked a little bit ad hoc. There were some fences that were obviously coming to the end of there, there were just wood fences that needed some work. So is that all a part of the scope of?
Yeah, the sheds are being removed and just the fence.
So the sheds are being removed and then the one trash enclosure.
Oh, you have to look at the mic and make sure we pick you up on the tape. Can you identify yourself?
I'm Brian Russell with MRK. So the trash enclosure that's already existing, the facing will be updated to go with the other two trash enclosures that we're adding. And then those two sheds will be removed from the property. There's a maintenance facility next to the pool that we'll be utilizing instead of those sheds.
So how about perimeter fencing and planning? What conditions are in or what, are you doing anything to that?
So actually what you're seeing on this prop, on the site plan is actually, those are, that's existing conditions. There's a tremendous amount of mature trees that already exist in the property. Where landscaping is being added is around where the elevators are being added. And then along some of the new trash enclosures, there's some additional landscaping that's being added.
As operators, I, I know the answer to this question, but I'll, I'll say it out loud because people are going to wonder. Do you have control over trash pickup times?
Under the red, yes, so for residential, we will be. And actually, we've even spoken with Gateway Commons about who they use for their trash company and we're getting actually.
Cause traditionally, commercial dumpster pickups happen at weird hours and that's not nice for neighbors necessarily, so.
Yeah, no, they can actually, they're, they're, they've been speaking with the company to contract with one that would occur and actually hopefully to be able to correlate.
Okay, good. All right, any other questions, I want to go to the public here. Okay, is there anyone here in the public that wants to please come up to the stand, introduce yourself, name and address and let us know what's on your mind.
My name's Dave Cook, I'm the president of the Gateway Commons Homeowners Association. We had several meetings with the folks from MRK, so you can imagine there are all kinds of concerns. And, you know, some of our homeowners would have preferred a golf course or something. But we felt that our concern, the board felt that our concerns were dealt with fairly by MRK. In cases where they could reasonably be done, you know, with the, for example, with trash pickup, there are regulations about how many there have to be and where they have to be. But we appreciated the way that we were dealt with, that we felt we were dealt with fairly. And that's the end of what I would say on behalf of the board, speaking for myself. I would say that I think that the senior housing development will be a net positive for the Gateway Commons neighborhood, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anybody else? All right, are we sure? Okay. All right, seeing nobody, why don't we wrap up the recommendation and then we can get to discussion.
Okay, so I'm going to be two motions. So the first one's going to be a staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation grant. SP seven six two eight dash two thousand seventeen, high house reuse, finding compliance with sections twenty-four dash one seventy and twenty-four once dash, twenty-four dash one seventy-one of the city code with no conditions. And the second recommendation is staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation grant a parking waiver of motorcycle spaces finding compliance and performance with section twenty-four dash two two A of the city's zoning ordinance.
Any concerns with motorcycle parking space waiver? How many would be required on, on a site plan that sells? Two? So I mean essentially you're just restructuring a standard spot. Yeah, we're overage on our, we're overage on our number of spots, so that's kind of. So no concerns on the motorcycle. All right, any, any discussion on the, the major plan, conversion plan?
I find the distance between the elevator, sorry, I can't read the name. Basically, the, the elevator on the south and building F, the distance is incredibly long. So I, I wondered if there's a point to, to having those extensive walkways that are not covered up.
Now that it's up Jasmine, could you circle where she was talking?
So you're saying that the distance from this building to this elevator?
I just, I think it's.
This is building B.
Yeah, the functionality of that, I mean, do you imagine a? I think we've talked enough about the, uh, the potential of the second elevator, of the third elevator. Connecting perhaps those two buildings, but truly honestly, I think that, um, the distance, it's, it's way too long. If you're going to the other end and you take a fall and that's the only option.
So roughly speaking, what is that run? If you take, if you were to add the distance, the length of the, if you put that back up, you take sort of a rough, rough estimate of.
You can pull a chain right up that one spot.
You know, roughly two thirds of the length of the building that the elevator is attached to, plus the length of that building on the north side there.
I believe it's three hundred and thirty-five feet. From B to, or from the elevator to the end of building B.
So the thought is, is that it provides a, an, an alternative means to get to the higher levels. But MRK's experience has actually been, and, and most of their senior projects actually don't have, in terms of this kind of a, the market that's, that's going here in terms of the active adult versus an assisted living type facility. So they're thinking that a lot of people are going to be taking the stairs irrespective of having the elevators, but with the elevators provides another alternative.
And I understand that, I think that, you know, there's a trend towards moving into a more active role, even in retired communities. However, isn't your age sixty-two and over?
It's six, it's sixty-two and over. We are suspecting that people are going to self-select in terms of their decision to, to rent here. And they may self-select in terms of which floor they would like to live on. So there's, there's various options within the buildings in terms of both two and three stories, as well as what floor of the building that they would wish to rent as well.
Just to clarify the openness of that top floor, the existing walkways are underneath the existing roof line. So it's only the new portions that would be the bridge connection or going around the building to connect them together is the portion that would be open.
But just as a pure geometry exercise, why wouldn't you have located the tower kind of in the elbow of those two buildings?
Um, that would be on the inside of the courtyard and there's more, there's more utilities, there's more obstacles on the inside of the, the courtyard than there is on the, the outside. The, as far as storm sewers and things like that coming through. So the easiest, cheapest, most, you know, flexible area was on those outside locations.
Can't block windows either, so it has to be out. Yeah, sure. What else, anything?
I just hate to beat the dead horse, but can we put that back up, exhibit six? So I mean, again, I, I know you answered this question, but so you, you considered moving, I mean, having the elevator closer to the other side of that's building. I forget what number it is. Put the, if we can put six up again?
Six, is this what you're talking about or are you talking about the interior floor plan?
I'm talking about to, where, where Ruff Zali was talking about the long stretch, like putting it over to the, to the other side, yeah. The elevator over on that side.
Between A and B?
Cause right now the elevator is down in this area.
Right.
That originally was connecting these two buildings.
Right.
And then through the process, they, we added this bridge and connected to building B also. So if the elevator can be in this location or it could be in this location, but if you moved it up here, you know, this, the distances are, it's going to be the same, just reversed.
There's no way to, there's no way to solve that without a third elevator.
Right. Yeah, that's what kind of.
And that third elevator is only serving a two-story building, not a three.
Two and three, sorry.
Two, yeah.
Sorry, no.
Yeah, because the other one's such a long run.
It's running a one-story building, three units, ten floors. And I, I think I, I hear the struggle and, and I, and I hear maybe a perception in my mind that sounds like you're thinking of this as an assisted living facility, which it is not.
Not, not really, I'm not looking at, I'm not looking at it like that. But I'm just, you know, people have groceries and stuff like that.
We have, we have, you know, fifteen thousand units in the city that don't have elevators, so. And, and frankly, the market will correct us if, if there becomes more demand for, I won't call it assisted living, but if there's a need, there, there's, there's ways to retrofit. Yeah, a four hundred thousand dollar elevator is going to look pretty good if it's an empty building.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think again, if, if we were talking about a brand new building on a, on a flat lot, I think we'd be having a totally different discussion, I think.
That's true.
I think this plan does a good job of sort of. But, but I think this, I think what's being presented is, is sort of a good, sort of best, best approach given the existing building. I mean, within the reality of budgets and, and what makes sense, I think, I think it's a good improvement.
I just, I just think we do, I mean, I think we do need to have the discussion.
That's true. And I think we, we're seeing progression from the concept sketch or concept plan when we had this, this discussion the first time. So it's an improvement and, and clearly an improvement on the, the current use. So it has progressed nicely, which I think is, is a plus. There was great cooperation or good cooperation between the applicant and the neighbors and good resolution of the concerns there. That's, that's, I'm glad to hear that because that's not always what we hear. So thank you for all participating in that. Anything else we need to cover on the approval, either as a condition or as a concern before we move it forward? I just want to, I want to back up a little bit and talk about zoning just for a second and say that, you know, the, you know, master plan calls for a diversity of uses. It calls for, you know, uh, uh, what I'll call a both the market and a population diversity of housing types. And we have luxury senior housing in the city and we don't have a lot of middle-class senior housing in the city. And the way you typically do that is to take an older product and refresh it and be able to offer a product to folks that aren't at the very top of the income range. Something that's very nice and a great place to live, which when I, when I review this from a, just slightly bigger picture piece, I say this is a great rehab to hit that market and produces a, a product that the city doesn't have a lot of. So from a master planning and zoning standpoint, this, this project was great to me and it did a great job.
And, and, and to your point, that was, that was my summary was this was a great, you know, because that, I remember I was, you know, I was being a part of the board when we, when the commission, when this was coming, came to us new. And it was exciting to have, you know, a hotel in the area, but unfortunately it's just, it's tough back and people just don't see it. They may, you know, and it. And it was exciting to have, you know, a hotel in the area, but unfortunately it's just, it's tough back and people just don't see it, they may, you know, and it, and it just didn't work, but it's really great that you all are coming up with another, a great reuse, so I, I do agree with that.
Okay. Good discussion, thank you. Good project, good looking project, thanks for the work you've done on it. Is there, are we ready for motion? Is there any other discussion that wants to add to the, to the record? Okay, Jasmine, do you, does it matter what order we do the two motions in? Do you?
No.
So let's take them in the same order they're presented then, please, is there a motion for approval of the site plan?
Sure. Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, our discussion and the staff report finding and recommendations grant SP seven six two eight dash two zero one seven Hyatt House reuse. Finding in conformance with sections twenty four dash one seventy, twenty four dash one seventy one of the city code with no conditions.
Second.
So moving to second in all, in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Does that, does that get a five zero? Okay. That passes unanimously and next up is the recommendation that we grant a waiver for two motorcycle spaces. Your motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the application, applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendations grant a parking waiver of the motorcycle spaces. Finding it in conformance with section twenty four dash two 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 A of the city's zoning ordinance.
Second.
Second in all, in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thanks very much, good luck. I want to give one clarification Jasmine, the drive while running into, off of Skidmore? That's a private drive, right?
I believe yes.
Right, right, starting way back at Skidmore, okay. Thank you. Next up is our second site plan for the evening, it's SP dash seven five dash seven four twenty seventeen Crown Neighborhood Three Phase One at ten thousand Fields Road. Crown Park Avenue and Decoberly Drive in the MXD Zone. Emperor's an act of the staff, this is Greg Mann, good evening.
Good evening.
Nice transition.
This is for application SP dash seven five seven four dash twenty seventeen, requesting final site plan approval for the first phase of Crown Neighborhood Three. The subject property is located west of Decoberly Drive, south of Fields Road and east of Omega Drive, as seen on the screen now. And the property is currently undeveloped and is zoned MXD.
I didn't, but I should have, sorry.
Whenever he sees stuff like that, he gets so excited. He's so excited. It's like, look, look, yeah, look at Roger.
This application is based upon schematic event plan SDP dash seven three five four dash twenty sixteen, approved February twenty first twenty seventeen by resolution R dash eight dash seventeen. Um, the application we reviewed tonight includes the final engineer for phase one and the final architecture for the multifamily condo building. Um, it should be noted, the final architecture elevations for the townhomes and stack two over two condominiums were reviewed under a subsequent amendment to final site plan application. Um, and that is also similar to how neighborhood two was handled and reviewed. Um, and then here tonight to present the application and answer any questions you may have is the applicant David Ramsey of Westbrook Properties.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. As Greg mentioned, I'm David Ramsey with Westbrook Properties. I'm here tonight with Ulysses Monta Diocca with Lazard. And as Greg said, we're here tonight to present a final, final site plan application for Crown Neighborhood Three Phase One. This first slide here shows the overall Crown development, which you are familiar with. Neighborhood one sits to the west, adjacent to San Mike Highway. Neighborhood two sits more towards the center of the property and then Neighborhood three sits to the east, which you can see is highlighted and right here. Neighborhood three received final schematic development plan approval in February of this past year and will be one of the final phases of residential land development within Crown. Neighborhood three Phase One will be the first phase within Neighborhood Three. And also takes into account the changes we discussed, discussed with the planning commission during the SDP process. Phase one is located directly adjacent to existing Decoberly Drive, which sits right here. Directly south of future Neighborhood Five, which is here, and directly north of the existing retreat, which is our clubhouse, swimming pool, tennis court and playground. Phase one includes a total of one hundred and eighteen dwelling units comprised of sixty four multifamily condos, thirty six twenty foot townhomes, fourteen two over two condos and four twenty four foot townhomes. Our site plan for phase two, which will include the remainder of Neighbour, oh. Which will include the remainder of Neighborhood Three and all these lots over here is in final internal QC with us and our engineer and we plan on submitting that hopefully within the next two weeks to Greg. Similar to the existing Crown development, the phase one design is focused on creating a sustainable, more urban lifestyle by integrating a network of streets and sidewalks favorable to both pedestrians and automobiles. While also providing an abundance of usable open space. The road types and dimensions are consistent with our SDP and the streets create a similar pattern of blocks with pedestrian friendly intersections. The primary points of access into phase one will be from Decoberly Drive off of the existing Crown Park Avenue here, as well as the extension of proposed Rockwell Avenue here. The construction of Salinger Drive to the east, located here, will provide circulation. While the addition of Armstrong Place, Bleaker Place and Salinger Place will enhance and promote connectivity within the plan. On-street and off-street parking has been strategically located to maximize available guest and visitor parking within each block. Off-street parking has been provided through garage and driveway spaces at one and a half spaces per unit for the multifamily condos. Two per unit for the two over two condos and four per unit for the twenty foot and twenty four foot townhomes. It is anticipated that Polte Homes will be building the multifamily condos, which sit right here in between these two buildings. And as a result, the architecture for these condos has been included with this application. Our builders have not yet been selected for the two over two condos or the townhomes and therefore the architecture for the remaining product will be submitted for planning commission review. As an amendment to the site plan, which is a process very similar to how Neighborhood Two was reviewed and approved. So now with me tonight is Ulysses and I'm going to turn it over to him to present the architecture.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ulysses Montez Diocca with Lazard Design, architects of the applicant for a multifamily component. The multifamily is, consists of two building segments over a parking podium. Uh, each building is four floors and has thirty two units each, four units, eight units per floor on each segment. Parking podium, because of a topography on, on the north side at Hendrix Avenue is completely underground and on Crown Park Avenue is fully exposed. The, the main entrance to the buildings are along Decoberly Drive on building one, it would be at the parking level. And building two would be at the first residential level above parking, cause parking at these areas is underground. Services are, utilities are provided here in the lowest part of the site. Uh, parking entrance on the back is through, through this alley that also serves the back of the townhouses and two over twos. And let me go to the next slide, I'm gonna jump to that, oops, parking first, there. Now, the, the, comprises sixty four units, we're required to provide one point five space per unit, that's ninety six parking spaces. There are ninety six parking spaces provided. Two percent are motorcycle, which it's two motorcycle spaces, we're providing one near each building entrance. Bicycle spaces is one every twenty five parking spaces, we're required to provide four overall, we're providing eight. Providing four on each side of the building, four over here close to the elevator, four over here close to the other elevator. The yellow, the highlighted elements are the residential components that come down. Egress stairs, building two, the, the second egress stair discharges at the floor above, so it doesn't come down to the, to the parking. And again, utilities are on, on the lower side. Now I'm going back one slide, this one, when we were approached by, by Polte, um, we, we got excited to participate again in Crown. Where, if, if you don't remember, we're the architects on the, the lofts at Crown downtown, Neighborhood One, it's under construction. The exercise, we learned a lot about the, the values of the community and aesthetics and the, and the guidelines that were so well put together. When we got approached by, by Polte, they, they came with a prototype. We got a building for you to design, but it's already designed.
My work is not giving money.
Yeah, well, for, 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 for Polte, this is a proven product, the, the building all over the place, that, in Fairfax, in, in Herndon, in Vienna Metro. There's several projects they're building already, so there's a lot of lessons learned that, that they're bringing. And our role is to, to combine the values of Crown with their, their prototype and to make this a feasible project. So what we're bringing in front of you is our concept that obviously has the values, we broke down the scale. Each unit, if you see right there, each unit has an inboard balcony that naturally breaks the, the mass of the building into little, uh, smaller segments. And we on purpose treated those, the back of those balcony bays with darker material just to highlight the separation of those bays and maintain human scale. On, on downtown Crown, we, we sense there's a lot of texture in the buildings, which is, is great for pedestrian sense. So we're, we're bringing the same concept to the building, every floor has a row lock on soldier course, projected and recessed base. We have here in front of you the materials that we're proposed, that we're proposing. Predominantly it's brick. The entire building, the base is darker, the upper floors is a lighter color brick and the accents are with fiber cement and in dark color. In, at the back of the building, just go over. Sorry, I'm sensitive mouse. There. The back of the building, well, this, this elevation shows how the, the grade drops.
Give it just a second for the monitors to catch up, there you go.
Okay. The, the bottom is the, the Coverly Drive elevation, it shows how, how the grade is higher over here and it comes down. We treated the base darker brick and then a lighter brick above. And the entrance to each building is highlighted with different geometry, we have a slanted wall that it's also treated with different material, we're treating it with light gray stone. It's also gonna have a canopy, a small canopy with the C channel, steel, steel beam with the letters floating, that when the, the sun casts a shadow. You, you would be able to read the, the building sign on the shadow on the wall. The, the short sides, yes, that's better, just one next, there. The, the short sides of the building, the ones that face each other are treated with brick equally at the front and the back. And the ones facing, this, this one's facing the, uh, community building, the, the amenity building. And this one's facing Hendrix Avenue at the higher side. So the, the back of the building, that's facing the townhomes and the two over twos. These three bays are, instead of brick, we, we utilized fiber cement. Which we think it's gonna be more compatible, most likely the back of those units, the alleys are usually siding. So we think it's gonna be more compatible material and the termination of those alleys will be more compatible. We still respect the corners, every corner is treated equally with, with brick, highly textured. And I think that's about it, I'm happy to answer your questions.
So is there no market for, or, or a smaller market for things like rooftop decks on, on these units, or there's no opportunity to do that here? Some, some of the earlier stuff we saw for Crown and other, actually other sites too, were taking advantage of the flat roof building type and then doing something with the rooftop.
Bill, that, that would be a question for my client, more for the architect.
I, I know we've looked at it, I mean, we did look at it at the Michael Harris lofts. And part of the concern, at least from our perspective with condo buildings, is just the, the liability and the, the maintenance for potential leakage through something with a flat roof. I know there's technology and, and building materials out there to help prevent that, but in a condo type product, it's something we, we try to avoid just because of the, the maintenance issues that are involved in that.
How do you manage, so you're gonna do the, the double stack parking on one side of the parking aisle, right? So calculations aside on how much parking is required, how do you actually allocate parking in that, that situation with the units?
There are, there are sixty four units and sixty eight standard spaces and twenty eight are tandem. So at least one unit, each unit gets one standard space without the tandem, the tandems would be extra.
So how do they, how do they get allocated, the, the sort of the inboard ones that are.
So the tandem spaces, I believe, are going to be sold as an option, right? They're gonna be treated as an option. So if, if a unit owner has two cars and they want those two reserved spaces, they'll be sold to those unit owners as an option.
They belong to the same unit.
Yeah, the front unit will belong to the same unit as the back unit, that's the only way that would work. They get, right, or it would be, okay.
Yep, that's the only way that would work.
Puts down all fights.
Right.
Well, everything's sold, right? But every, every space is sold, so at the end of it, there's a contract on every.
Correct, some will be forced out.
Piece of.
Right, exactly, yep.
It's a condo, so everything's, you're done. You bought it, you're done.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
So, just a quick question, so, so the, the darker brown will not be in the front? Either the front elevations?
The side elevations.
The darker brown, uh, brick, that goes on the base, uh, on the first floor.
Right.
It's, it's here on, on the.
Right, okay.
Building ones on the back, it's over here.
It's in the back.
And then, well, in the front is also, oh, on one floor, the first floor is all, all dark brick.
Okay, and the other, so the other elevations were this, were those?
The, the side, the short elevation.
The side.
Yeah, the shorter ones, yeah, those are sides.
The short elevations, this, this is all above the first floor, so it doesn't have dark brick, this is actually a mistake, good catch.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Good catch, this, this, this actually has to be the dark, this should be the dark brick.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Am I crazy?
So.
He's available for QC.
So I just wanna make sure I'm understanding quickly, only, do both of these buildings have parking at grade or, or does only one of them sit on a parking podium? I'm looking at the two sets of elevations.
It's a, if, if you see, it's just one parking level, so let's go to that parking level, there, uh, next, there. Just one parking level, it's just this, this building, the entrance, main entrance to the building is here, cause you're at grade.
Got it, got it, got it.
This part of the building is underground.
So it's one continuous parking podium under both.
Correct.
Slanted.
Got it. The street's the one.
Yeah, right, right.
So that leads me to my actual question, which is on the Decoberly Drive elevation under building one. What is actually facing the street? What is that, how is that treated? Cause you're looking into a parking garage, on building two, you've got windows and occupied space, people living there or public, you know, amenity space. At the street as you're walking down Decoberly Drive, if I walk down Decoberly Drive at nine o'clock at night, what am I gonna be walking next to on building one?
Okay, on building one, uh, the garage will have openings and the openings are treated, are screened. The parking is illuminated inside and the building has, has also lighting. The, the openings of the garage, the, this, the juicy over here and here, those are treated with tube metal with metal mesh in the back. And it's painted the same color as our metal railings, it's one of the metal chips down there, it's, it's called gray velvet, the color.
I'm glad to see the color.
Yeah.
I was hoping there was a piece of metal mesh there, but I, I see the color. I guess that, if I had, had one concern about this whole thing, it, it would be that, it'd be that you've got your pedestrian experience walking down the street and the, the face that that podium presents to the street. Is A drastically different between the two buildings where one's occupied and one's parking garage? And B, just the, the difference between. A, a sort of more lively window space like you have on building two and a metal mesh with some overhead LED lights lighting up a bunch of cars, it's just really different. Now, I'm not sure what the solution is here, cause you're being driven into that by the grade.
It's, it's definitely not activated frontage, the, the activation's on the front door only. We, we saw it happening downtown, the public garage has openings at grade and the, the one we have on construction has the same condition. And there's, there's a lot more pedestrian activity over there, we, we thought this was under, under local.
Yeah, I guess, I, I guess where I'm going with this is, I'm not sure off the top of my head if there's a better way to dress those openings up other than a painted metal grate.
How much, and I, how much landscape buffer is there between the sidewalk and where this is happening? We, we didn't look at it.
There's not, there's not a ton of room, I've got a landscaping plan that I'm gonna show you after we're done with the architecture.
Cause that, that would help soften it, it's not a hundred percent, but. Cause that, that would help soften it, it's not a hundred percent, but that might be part of what the answer is.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, I, I feel like I've seen, as I've been walking around various cities, parking garage facades at grade that almost had, they weren't glass, but they almost had window frames with a mesh behind them that gave a more architectural feel to it, as opposed to just tube metal and a, and a mesh grate that had more of a security grid feel.
Could, could we zoom in? It, we're probably saying the same thing.
Okay.
It, 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 it almost looks like a window, but instead of glass, it's a, it's a perforated metal.
Okay, that.
There, it, it has the same pattern as the windows above.
Okay, that's definitely an improvement over what I had in my head when you said tube steel and mesh. I, yeah, then I guess my one only comment is it would be, and I saw you had photometrics in the, in the, uh, package for garage lighting. I couldn't quite look at them on my screen. I would strongly encourage, uh, some attention being paid to the lighting along that facade to, you know, just try and make sure it's not a bunch of dark hole at night, that it's perhaps better lit along that facade than elsewhere.
Uh, if, if you notice in the application page, details, sorry, the changes. We're providing lights not only at the entrance of the building and our exit discharge, uh, points. We're providing lights on the corners of every, every tower. The composition of this building has these towers at each end, right? It's driven by the floor plan that we were given. Uh, so at each corner, there's an opportunity to, to provide light. So on top of the current street lighting that would be provided, this building has, uh, its accents with the eclectic looking lighting. It's part of the packet that you, you, you received. Uh, the, the photos of the lights that we're installing are also there.
I guess what I, I was talking more about interior lighting inside the garage so that those windows aren't dark caverns at night when you've got fully lit. And I'm just looking at your photometrics that, you know, you're probably twenty, thirty feet back from that facade before you get up above, you know, two or three foot candles, uh, based on your photometrics. So I'm not gonna tell you what to do one way or another, it's just a suggestion that you have your lighting designer look at that.
Noted.
Good, any other questions?
That's a, it's a valid concern, I, I'm curious what the pedestrian environment does look like, so.
Okay.
Maybe just to revisit that a bit, if you go to the site plan, does, your plan doesn't actually show the confront, like on the other side of, um, DeCoverly, right?
I'm sorry, the what?
If you look at the site plan for this, this phase.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's confronting DeCoverly, which is sort of a big boulevard and, you know, but what, what is across the street at this point?
Their existing townhomes.
Cause the towns are facing there.
Yep.
Set back a lot, but there seems to be some kind of a landscape buffer there, right?
So, there is, and I'll, um, if I can go to the landscaping slide, I can show that to you, um, right after the architecture. So this is the, to the left, this is the overall landscaping plan for neighborhood three, phase one. And then to the right here, this is a blow up of the, the Central Park, uh, within parcel E. So, you know, our plan has taken advantage of the open space and park design to create a strong sense of community and space. Street trees frame the primary roadways, uh, along Salinger Drive here. But then also you can see here along the, the Coverly Drive, and you saw it a little bit in, in Lassard's rendering, there is room to plant street trees in front of that building, um, as well, to, to break some of that up. Um, and, and I'd have to look at it closer and maybe Ulysses, you know, I mean, I'm assuming there's room for, for smaller shrubs and plantings right up against the building foundation to, to put something there, and that's something we could easily do.
I mean, I think if you're gonna be clever about how to layer some landscaping, that's the place to do it, not just default to whatever the stock, you know.
Agreed.
Foundation shrub and trees, but, but something that really tries to, to work with the building.
Yeah, I don't think you want that at all, I don't think you wanna just throw some shrubs at it. I think you wanna look at it and get some flowering, since, since you can actually block the windows of the garage and they're not, cause they're not windows, you know, there's some opportunities for small flowering trees mixed with, you know, midsize plantings and then some smaller plantings in front of it. Just get a bit of lirite or something, so you can do the cliche three-tier landscaping thing in four feet. Doesn't take ten feet, you know.
Okay.
And it's a beautiful place to walk past. I think, uh, if I, I guess we're off track, but, but, uh, I think the concern is that the pedestrian scale environment has a lot of detail to it, variegation. And so, uh, to make it exciting, uh, sometimes you can do that with a big storefront and people behind it laughing and giggling and drinking wine or whatever. And sometimes you can do that with, um, uh, accessories on the street, you know, benches, you know, uh, dog, you know, washing station, whatever it is, you can, you can activate a street, a sidewalk in a bunch of different ways. And if you have a narrow sidewalk and not a lot of physical activity in the building, you tend to do that with landscaping and some accessories, a couple benches or something, uh, so that maybe somebody can be sitting there at some point. So I, I don't know that it's, we're asking, or we're talking about something that's, you know, original. I think, I think it's pretty, pretty simple and straightforward, but it's just a little bit more complicated than throwing, throwing shrubs at it, you know.
You just verified, there's a five-foot, uh, planting buffer between the walkway, which is eight feet, eight-foot walkway, and then there's five-foot planting between the concrete and, and, and building.
Yep, so do something.
Yeah, we will.
Do something deliberate. Um, is there anyone in the audience that, uh, wants to comment on this application? Okay, I guess not. So, um, to kinda get us on the, the usual track, um, why don't you do the recommendation that we can get to discussion?
Were you done with the landscape?
Uh.
More to present?
That was the only landscape plan, right? So, uh, we had the park, um, inside, which is going to sit.
Okay.
Right here, right? So this is a blow up of the, of the green space. That's going to be the western end of the longer linear park that'll extend all the way through neighborhood three. And what we've done here is we've maximized the open green space in the center of that park for usability, framed it on either end with some, uh, shrubs and, and low-lying ground covered in flowers. And then from a site furnishing standpoint, we have a pedestrian sidewalk that runs around the entire perimeter of the park. There is a pergola with benches at the, at the terminus, which will be one of the focal points of that area. So there'll be a, a pergola with some benches under it there as well as a trash can, um, for usability purposes as well.
Could almost be a little pigeon putt hole, you know?
Mm-hmm.
You can pass right through between the two buildings and maybe to this park, is that, is that right from, um, in the break in the building, you can?
No, you can't, it's not a grade.
It's not at the same elevation.
So you can't get, even if steps are over it, it's, it's just a.
No, you, you have to, you have to walk around, that's gonna be patio space that'll be used by the in-unit condos there.
But you can't cut through there, they, they can't come down to the street from there.
Just because of the grading.
Okay.
And because of the way the podium is, that's, it's elevated there, so we could've done it, but you'd lose parking spaces and we didn't wanna do that.
Okay.
So moving on briefly to key lots and alley screening, this key lot plan is consistent with the SDP we brought through earlier this year. We have three types of, of key lots, there are alley entrance slots, in-unit key lots and open space key lots, all of which either the front side and or rear facades will be treated with a similar palette of materials, um, to promote and protect these highly visible view sheds. In addition to the key lots, we are also incorporating alley screening in the form of walls and landscaping. Uh, and you can see there, those are, those are located at the alley entrances with the, with the green circles going into each alleyway. And this is a picture of what the alley screen wall will look like down here, very similar to what we did in, in neighborhood two as well. And my last slide, I just wanted to provide a quick update on our water main replacements for no reason other than I, I brought it up late last year during the SDP process. And if you recall, uh, we agreed to replace an existing thirty-six inch water main and a sixty-inch water main that run under future Salinger Drive in neighborhood three. Uh, between January and June of this year, we completed both of those replacements in their entirety. And WSSC now has both of those mains back in service and fully operational, so that, that work is one hundred percent completed this time.
Okay.
You drive that orange mini through there, right?
So was, is that the end of the presentation?
That's the end.
So to catch you off, okay. Um, so with that, is there anybody in the audience that wants to comment? I don't, I don't think there is anybody ready to step up here. So, um, Greg, what's the, what's the recommendation?
Um, real fast, before I get the recommendation, I would like to note that, um, one of the conditions on the, in the rec- staff's report um, was about the affordable, um, final affordable housing plan being, being assigned, approved, sorry, prior to the issuance of building permit. That actually has been resolved since the package has been submitted for you, so I would recommend removing that condition.
Okay.
Um, so therefore staff's rec- staff's recommendation is that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, staff report, findings, recommendation, grant SP dash seven-five, seven-four, dash twenty seventeen, final site plan, final conform, compliance with sections twenty-four, dash one-seventy, and twenty-four, dash one-seventy-one on city code with five conditions.
Okay, great, okay. Concerns, questions?
Um, I think so- somebody mentioned if there was a, a way to connect that pathway, um, with the green. And I just thought, what if you did a nice set of stairs that step all the way to where you have that pergola and you basically connect that whole green that goes through the entire neighborhood? That's just, you know, a wild thought.
So where, where is that?
Block at the Coverly or something?
Yeah, like.
You wanna connect it to?
Both ways, so if there was a stair, um, a grand stair that connected it or terminated that, um, that, the green, sort of like the green artery that connects most, it's the center of your neighborhood. It would be a nice step-up way to step at the top of that, um, terrace and look down through it all.
So we looked at that, we looked at actually several options we could do for that patio. And, you know, the grading does pose a challenge, uh, we looked at the stair concept of potentially connecting the backside of those stairs to run down to the linear park. And what we ran into is the u- what, what that does to the actual usability of that patio space. And, and Ulysses, you might be able to talk to this a little about more than I can, but you have to create a walkway through there while also buffering in unit condos.
All, all kinds of issues from ownership, who maintains that, and accessibility and, uh, liability also having people from outside the ownership walk through that space, uh, that are involved in just solving this crossing. Uh, one of the things we, we looked at, let's say we provide a patio for each unit that's eight feet. The, the building, building to building right now is thirty-three feet. There, we're noting thirty-four, but that does not include the brick. So it's thirty, thirty-three foot finished. And, uh, if we add a patio for each unit plus a small planter, uh, uh, for privacy, we end up with five feet. So all, all this brain damage for just providing five feet is not a substantial benefit for anybody and it creates all kinds of legal problems that have to be embedded in this solution. And that's the reason why we opted to provide, uh, uh, embellished planter that will terminate the view, still visual connecting, uh, visually connecting, but you, you'll have perennial seasonal planting that will be replaced and you'll, you'll be visually attractive.
Terminus to the park.
Yeah, and it would be the same on the other side, on, on the street.
So the elevation change from the terrace, that patio, down to the linear park, allows you to look over the pergola? Or does the pergola gonna peek up above that?
We're slightly higher on the back and we're very high on the street side.
What, what does that mean?
Um, on the, yeah, that's a, that's a better slide. Uh, on the, this is the, the phase that overlooks the linear park. The floor elevation of the patio is about two feet above the, the grade, the proposed grade at the linear park.
Okay.
On the other side, it's about five feet, the one facing, um, so, oh, it's actually a long.
DeCoverly?
The Coverly, yes. So that's, that's the one that represents the most challenging part, uh, to connect and it, we would be losing parking in order to accommodate the stairs, cause right there, unless we cut also sidewalk space.
Yeah, I guess if we'd seen, thought about this, in the SDP, the idea would have two separate buildings that, you know, that, that the connection was part of the common space and not part of the, the condo project. That, that's probably an oversight in that earlier phase.
I'm, I'm not sure it's connecting anything though, it's mid-block on DeCoverly, which is a giant boulevard. So, um, um, unless, are you guys? So my, my, my concern is, I guess similar in basis, but it's more on how you split the traffic as you get to the terminus and go around the buildings. So, um, you know, so you have in your landscape plan, if you go back to your proposed landscape plan, that you have, directionally, you're heading south. So if you, if you're walking from the rest of the neighborhood up and you go through the park, um, and you get to the pergola and you enjoy a few minutes with a book or whatever, and then you, your choice to go on to either neighborhood one for something to drink or whatever, I guess it's me, right? So it's, 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 so I've read my book and now I'm going for a glass of wine, right? So I, I really only have one choice in terms of direction out of that, out of that pergola. And it's down to the main street, I think it's probably the right choice if you had to choose one. What I don't quite understand is why we had to choose one, why aren't we sort of making the ability to go around the building on both sides? And why isn't that path a little more prioritized? So I think I understand why you wouldn't wanna go through the building. I think, I think I agree with your legal issues and it just seems like something that would, would get us in trouble up here. We're gonna complain in a couple of years or whatever, but, um, but the pathway that goes from that park out to the street, from the end of that park out to the street, isn't treated, treated with, I think, the level of, you know, care and privacy that that path.
So you're saying, if you come off of Salinger Drive and you walk up here and you sit here to read a book, you're saying you have to come back out here to go back down the neighborhood?
Or take the, um, the little, the paces to the south.
Yeah, there's that, there's that little sidewalk that she's.
The color site plan is really clear.
Yeah, go back to the color site plan, maybe it's.
Okay, so, uh.
The other one or this one?
Oh, this one, yeah, yeah.
This one's fine, so pa- page right, so if you're at the pergola and you go page right, there's a sidewalk there that connects to the driveway essentially and.
Right.
And it gets you out to the sidewalk eventually.
Yes.
And that, I think, is, is not entirely treated with, like, pedestrian level respect. So I don't know the right terminology at the moment, but it's not, it's not a very pedestrian friendly environment once you hit the alley, right?
Yep.
Um, and then there's nothing on the other side, right? So you're, you're not heading that way at all, unless you're in a deer trailer.
The reason we put this sidewalk in is on, is because there's a, there's an egress out of the exposed garage on building one. So where you, the residents of that condo building have direct access out of the garage, they get on the sidewalk and they can get directly out onto the linear park, as opposed to having to come out the front of their building, walk all the way around, right? There was just, we were looking at it from that standpoint.
Yep.
Um, I agree with you that if, you know, if you look at it from a park standpoint, you know, to get from point A over to point B, you know, it's not ideal for that, but that, that really wasn't the intent of that, the original intent of that sidewalk.
Clear from the way you've drawn this, that that wasn't the intent.
Right.
So what I'm saying is that it, it, you've, you've lost some of the intent. What, what, you know, um, uh, both, uh, commissioners here are talking about is how do you terminate a large public space, communal space essentially.
Right.
And, uh, we discussed ramming it through the middle of your building, which I think there's some, there's some downsides to that. The other option is to go around that building, obviously, and still connect.
Right.
As the flow of traffic heads towards neighborhood one or, or home after some wine, it's, it's, you wanna, you wanna be able to move, you know, through that park and not have to be on the sidewalk. So I, I'm, I'm not saying you have to have it on both sides, I'm not saying that it has to be, you know, a contiguous park, but you, you have essentially a park deadening, deadening into an alley essentially. If I was gonna walk from my house further up in the neighborhood or from the future high school or whatever it is, and I was gonna walk to neighborhood one, which would be one of the main reasons I would buy a house in this neighborhood, right? Is, uh, you, you dead-ended it in the public areas, I'm only gonna do it by sidewalk, right?
Okay.
So, uh, I think that there are some small moves there that could probably fix that. It might be paving in the alley that creates a nicer sort of pedestrian edge to walk along, it's the edge of that alley. You might, uh, might be a landscaping, uh, you know, prioritization, but you might have another bench in there. There might be something else that, you know, might be small post lighting, I, I didn't, there's no lighting plan that comes with this small park, but I'm assuming there's some kind of post lighting in there somewhere. Um, and so if that post lighting continues on the, the path that runs page right on this drawing.
This, this gets into some detailed site planning, which.
Yeah.
I'm not sure we've done enough of on Crown, because it's been always presented in such large chunks. But if you look at this rendered plan, this is, this is the front door, this park is the front door to a number of units, right? So they're gonna walk along there to get, to get to their own homes and people will cut through the, the park for, just cause they'll enjoy the park. But it's not clear that you're either, either have permission to or supposed to walk around the condo building. You know, it's sort of like, there, there incidentally is a sidewalk that apparently is for egress, but it doesn't look like there's a gesture to allow or give people permission to, you know, come around the condo building.
Right, I mean, there's, there's not continuous sidewalk around the condo building, the way, I mean, the way the pedestrian sidewalks are created, you walk, you do. You, you follow the trail, you follow the sidewalk down to Salinger Drive, you come up this way and go into the front of your building.
Right, but if I, if I lived in that, one of those townhomes facing the park, and I was coming back from neighborhood one, I would just cut through there anyway. So it's likely to wear its own path at some point, I would guess.
Right.
So why not make it a part of the landscape plan to really make a nice, comfortable, you know, safe-looking, welcoming path back into there? Or is there a reason not to? It's kind of what I think.
It was, it was, it was a. It was, it was a space issue. I mean, you know, we've looked at different ways to put, you know, and Matt, I liked your idea of potentially extending, you know, maybe some pavers or asphalt pavers through the edge of this alley to create that, that path that's ultimately going to create itself, right? To where, you know, if you're walking here, you see that, and you go into the alley, it could be look like, you know, it's a, it's a nice decorative crosswalk type thing that's going to lead you right through there, edge of the loading, and then tie directly into that sidewalk and bring it into the park. I mean, I think that is a great solution, and honestly, I don't, I'd have to check with our civil engineer. I know the reason we didn't put this type of sidewalk on this side was just because the intent again was to try to come out of the garage, which didn't work on Building Two. But if it's all kept at grade and we bring it this way, you know, looking at this right here, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to do the exact same thing over here to create that same pathway. So...
Yeah, and I think, and then to John's point too, another little detail, we're getting way down in the weeds, but it, you know, putting a little post out by the, out by the main sidewalk, out by Crown Park Avenue or Hendrix Avenue, that just announces, hey, parks this way.
Yeah, lead you in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Come enjoy.
I think it's a great idea.
And I think it's part of your sales walk eventually.
Yeah.
So when you're taking folks around, you know, you actually have a contiguous walk, and you're not making that uncomfortable, that horrible sales walk where you've walked through a beautiful garden and then you walk down the alley to get to whatever it is.
Yeah. We did it, we explored that, we just, we didn't think of that option of somehow putting pavers in across that, the edge of that alleyway. I think that's a great solution.
So we got the correction of this plan on the, from the SDP work, where we were talking about aligning the grid a little bit better for the end units to focus on the, on the street. I think that we're done with that. I'm sorry, Matt, I cut you off.
No, I'm still hung up on the termination of this, because I think Matt phrased it very nicely, that, you know, this, the endpoint, like, the arrival point. And so I'm wondering, if rather than just landscaping it, there can be an art feature, maybe, since you can go through it, something that terminates that particular point.
So we tried to do that with the pergola, that was kind of the intent of putting that there. It sounds like that might not...
A water feature, something that celebrates that, you know, you've reached the other end of your, this is it.
The pergola definitely helps, but I, you, I think you really ought to look at it though as an art opportunity. You got to, you basically put up a platform, it could be a great sales piece, particularly as you, if you could see it from the Cobrely as well, you can get a lot of traffic up and down that road for something. It's a great piece of architecture, frankly, since we're in discussion, I want to say it's probably the best thing Polte's put up in a while, but it's, but it's, but it's a great building.
Taking us a compliment.
Some of the, some of the detail and articulations...
He doesn't offer it off.
Yeah, I don't offer it.
Really.
The, I think, putting, it's a really simple, clean building.
Yeah.
And, but as I hear it and saw the details, the focus is in the sort of, the texture and scale at a much more, you know, within two feet kind of, kind of range. So I really like the skin, I just don't see it translating into the landscape plan and translating into the pathways, the pedestrian pathways. So I think it's a great building, and it'll get a lot of visual traffic on the Cobrely. It's the little details that are, that haven't sort of gotten filled in that'll make it sing.
My big paraphrase from this discussion is, is sort of streetscape, landscape. I think, I think that's, that's sort of the missing link right now. And I, you know, we brought up the idea that on the Cobrely, we should probably see a little more, a little bit more thought in how that, that's developed to soften the edges of the parking that, you know, begin to pop out of the ground. Some discussion about what the terminus of the park really should be, I mean, I think the pergola can be great, or it could be, it could be kind of okay, you know?
Right.
You've seen them both, right? They're pretty out there. And I wonder, is there, and I'll be careful how I say this, I'm not insisting on it, but Greg, is there a way to maybe wrap a condition around a little more thought about the landscape, hardscape, streetscape, whatever, whatever scape you want to call it, but I think it's all kind of under this umbrella.
Yeah, I think we can.
Just discussion about focals, I mean, the thing on the end of the park is a little, it's a little higher level than just, you know, a layer of landscape, and there's a focal quality to it.
If it's okay with the commission, I would recommend that we handle that staff level, if that's okay? Or would you like to come back?
I'll defer to the commissioners.
Yeah, that's fine with me, and I think applicants, peers may be listening, and so if we can, I don't know what we arm you with, but in terms of a condition, but, but that, it's fine with me, if staff handles that.
Is that, does that make sense, or is there a particular element you want to add a little bit more direction to?
I guess I would, I'm trying to think, precedence, and the one that keep jumping at me, it's, it's the beginning of corridor, but it's a really high density in South Korea and Seoul.
I thought you were going to go as far as like Germantown.
No, but it has this really great water feature that connects throughout the whole entire, like, canyon basically of, of green space. But it just, you know, that is the beginning of it. I don't know if you guys are familiar with it, but it, it ties it all the way through the entire downtown. Obviously, the scale itself, but I'm just looking at something that creates that initial or ending point.
Okay.
Reading to this aspiration, I mean, I think what we're talking about is, we spent a lot of time at SDP really agonizing over the very valuable, very precious open spaces that were going to emerge from this. Remember, remember how much work we, how much grief we put you through on that? And, and we're still kind of there, is that we want to see those realized at a much higher level than just incidental.
No, I understand everything you guys are saying, and it makes total sense to me. And, you know, I think we can, a little more wow factor, right? You know, at the focal point, and I think, you know, with Greg's help, we can get there.
I think I'd be okay with a staff level review of this. I think, you know, the idea that there's, there's a landscaping component, there's a hardscape piece, there's, there's probably a focal art, sculptural, functional sculptural, maybe, you know, maybe the pergola becomes more of a functional sculpt, something that just takes us beyond the, you know, catalog.
Now, the other thought that I had, and, you know, as I mentioned, we're getting ready to bring in Phase Two, right? Neighborhood Three, Phase Two, which is, this, this little piece of this park is probably a fifth, if not less, of what that overall park will be. So the majority of that attention to detail with landscaping will obviously take what we've heard today and incorporate that into that park as well.
Good.
But what do you think, I mean, is there an opportunity to address this at the Phase Two site plan, which is going to come in in the next couple of weeks, or is this something that we want to walk out of here with and just address it at staff level with you?
I think we should address it at staff level at this time. I don't want to muddy the waters between the two site plans.
Technically, we have to, because we're approving the site plan, so we'd have to, they do it now, but obviously, the economy of scale would be get, get the same guys working on both, right?
Sure, right.
Yeah.
Or if there's a problem, you come back for consent approval, or if there's a bigger problem, then you come back for whatever.
Okay.
So...
I would make a recommended, recommended condition, then, applicant to work with staff to revise street landscaping and sidewalk connectivity prior to issuance of any permits.
Does that cover it for you? It's so dry, but I can get covered. That would sound very exciting. We need to treat you here, so much for the aspiration. Everybody okay with that? Okay, so that puts us back to six conditions?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, any other questions, concerns, discussion?
I would add some other stuff. So public art, there's cantonary lights, there's potted trees you can put up on that plaza, there's just, there's a whole, I mean, there's a whole industry, a billion-dollar industry around.
Sure.
Filling these spaces.
Yep, for this need, absolutely.
Little strings of light bulbs?
Yeah.
Okay. Cantoneries, yeah. All right. Good, all right, are we ready for a motion, please?
Yes.
Anybody?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Danny, go ahead.
I move, yes, that based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony, and the staff report, report findings and recommendation that we grant SP seven-five-seven-four-two-zero-one-seven, final site plan, finding in compliance with sections twenty-four-one-seventy, twenty-four-one-seventy-one of the City Code with six conditions.
Second.
Okay. Moved to second and all. Favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes, you know, see, thanks very much for your work.
Thank you.
And too bad we're not going to have that mojito room, so maybe have those parties.
And I guess we'll see, we'll see this again for all of the future, okay. All right, that takes us to, from the commission, right? We're done? Yeah, from the commission. With Sally, can I start with you? Anything? Any follow-up?
Of course she has something.
Um, no, I think that's a question for staff, on, I believe that you're going to ask the roundabouts.
Yes, but I was just wondering if there's any more to the series that you all have been...
No, no, we're getting up for our October lecture, but we'll have some more details later. I just wanted to encourage everyone to sign up for the 5K, it's coming up, Labor Day weekend, so you can be in a corporate team, you can be in a family team, and...
City has a team.
Awesome.
I'm on it.
So, yes.
I'm going to have to volunteer this year, my knee's not going well.
It's a run walk.
Wheel, a run walk wheel.
Yeah, so, please, sign up.
Sounds good. Matt? Danny?
Yes, we have the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association outreach meeting yesterday. I went, we had some, a couple of folks show up, which was great. And I know, I sent a little short notice to folks, and people were out of the country or whatever, so I understand that people couldn't be there. But there is a survey, so I'm going to send you all a link to a survey, and I'm going to just ask you, please, 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 fill out the survey for me, just to, you know, just to help me out, and I would really appreciate if you did that, so, thanks a lot.
Do I have to be serious, too?
No, just be mad.
Yeah, nobody expects it to be serious.
Phil, anything tonight?
I don't have anything.
Okay. I will bring up that I had a conversation with John and some of the others on staff about where things stood on the work that was presented about making Kentland's Boulevard safer at the crosswalks. And I know there were some kind of interim or short-term solutions offered up by the consultants team and by others that were involved in the brainstorming. So I guess it's time to resurface those and see if, see if there's something we can do to get that moving.
That's right, that's right. We are actually looking for a motion tonight for advocacy for the short-term improvements for funding FY eighteen improvements to Kentland's Boulevard for pedestrian connectivity and walkability. And specifically, that would be for replacing the deteriorating decorative crosswalks with the more visibly enticing ladder-style crosswalks, and that would be all the crosswalks.
Yeah, you have your own crosswalks.
Yes, exactly. That would be all the crosswalks at Kentland's Boulevard, which are probably, there's probably ten or twelve. And then also the installation of four flashing beacons at the easternmost crosswalk and Main Street, and that is on the block where the senior housing is, that would cross Main Street. So that would provide a very safe crossing at that particular point, which is almost central on Long Kentland's Boulevard. But all of the crosswalks would be improved by the ladder-style crosswalks. And then also, just FYI, there is a roundabout study that has been funded, that will specifically look at some of the other recommendations that Rick Hall made, which included reducing some of the lane width around the roundabouts, and, and perhaps other improvements that have yet to be studied. But that has been funded, Public Works is in charge of that, and that does include a lighting study as well, which I know Commissioner Kaufman was particularly concerned about the lighting, so...
But in this interim work, there'd be no, there'd be nothing about street lighting in this interim study?
Not in the interim step, but it's part of the study.
Okay.
So that is part of what, you know, could come very soon in the future.
Okay.
But what we're looking for tonight is just your advocacy for this funding, which we think we can get the city manager on board to fund this for installation in September or October of this year.
Wow, that's quick. Let's do that for, any objections, any concerns?
I have zero objections whatsoever. I think my one and only question is, I think this particular issue in Kentland's Boulevard has come up and been addressed because there are a number of people on this commission who live there and experience those issues every day. What is the process, or what is the sort of ongoing analysis on a larger citywide basis for some of these identifying places with deficient pedestrian facilities, places that may be dangerous, places that need to be on a list for improvements? Because, I mean, I can walk around, Old Town, I can walk around anywhere and find places where parking, where striping needs to be done, or we need better sidewalks, and I think, I'm all, I'm all for addressing this one right now, but I think there needs to be sort of a better understanding, at least for me, about how we methodically address that on a citywide basis.
And that's a great point. I'm not prepared to respond to that tonight, but I will get with Public Works and we'll get you a response at your next meeting.
Okay, yeah, because I'm happy to be involved, I think everybody here is happy to be involved and be part of that conversation, but, you know, I think, I think we as a city need to make sure that we're not focusing these pedestrian, sort of, focus on improvements on the areas that happen to have the most advocacy on this commission, or happen to be, you know...
But I think to your point, and I, and I will let John talk it over with Paulie Corse, but all he did say that this was a model for the other roundabouts in the city. So basically, everything that was being studied here for the Kentland's Roundabout, it's a pilot for the rest of the roundabout. So it's not that this work will, it's isolated, it's...
Yeah, I think what I'm getting at is not roundabout-specific, it's broader issues.
Because he told me the Gerard Victory Farms was the roundabout, was the standard for the...
Well, just to support what Russell just said, the roundabout study is not specific to Kentland's, it is citywide, and, but, but your point is well taken, it's not just the roundabout, it's all pedestrian connectivity throughout the city, which we need to study.
And by, yeah.
Yeah.
Good. Okay, so you're recommending that we make a motion, a formal motion, though?
Yes.
And what does that motion sound like?
That you're supporting funding the short-term pedestrian connectivity improvements for Kentland's Boulevard, which include the ladder, replacing the deteriorating decorative crosswalks with the ladder-style crosswalks, and the four flashing beacons for Main Street.
So that's all it had to be?
Second.
Let's move to the second and all, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.